I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 6th, 2016 study session to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Leitner? Commissioner Walz? Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Plachek? Commissioner Alwell? Chairman Chatwell?
Is there any public comment?
Peter Bormuth, I just want to say that our state Attorney General, Bill Shute's, efforts to stop a voting recount in Michigan are partisan and undemocratic. It is the public's right to have knowledge that their votes are accurately counted.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing nor hearing none, I would like to entertain a motion. You're making the motion or am I? Thank you. In accordance with MCL 15268 for a legal opinion to be discussed. We have a motion in support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Leitner? Commissioner Walz? Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Plachek? Commissioner Alwell? Chairman Chatwell?
We will adjourn here to the 5th floor conference room, please. Entertaining a motion to concur with attorney's opinion, please.
Or?
Roll call?
Commissioner Leitner? Commissioner Walz? Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Plachek? Commissioner Alwell? Chairman Chatwell?
Commissioner Alwell, at your meeting.
Commissioner Leitner? Commissioner Walz? Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Plachek? Commissioner Alwell? Chairman Chatwell?
Well, we have been working on this 800 radio project for, what is it, at least a year now. And what we have learned is that it's not a matter of if we go to 800 radio system, it's a matter of when we go to 800 radio system. Probably, I dare say, 75% of the state has already moved to the 800 system. We, I don't want to say we're a holdout, but, you know, when you, you know, we have a VHF system that we have been, I don't want to say milking, but we have been maintaining as best we can. Well then, you know... Doesn't have the money. And that is weird.
Yes, thank you.
Mike, two quick questions. One is, are we expecting the life expectancy of these radios to be 10 to 15 years?
Yes.
And does MIS already have a tower?
No.
I think most people here know I've been in law enforcement 37 years now, and we've been on the VHF system that whole time. It was low band prior to that, and fire departments were on low band, and we've come a long ways. Narrowbanding killed us communication-wise, in my opinion, still operating as a police chief in the county. We have many times that the radio communications are not safe. People can't communicate, both fire departments and police departments. And it's not due to anybody's fault, it's due to narrowbanding in large part. We have seven towers in the county right now on the VHF system. Rich can probably tell us, but Washtenaw County has, I don't know, probably a dozen tower sites or maybe less, at a huge expense to their taxpayers. I think they did a millage that raised millions and millions of dollars. We agreed to take care of the radio system in this county when we pushed for passage of the surcharge. It passed, and I think the expectation is that we do take care of radio needs. This is what needs to happen, it needs to move us into the current century, and it needs to help interoperability-wise and really allow us to communicate. I think Motorola's prediction on the current system was that we had communications in 70, some 73% of the county with the current system, and this new system will take us to above 95% on the first key up. So it's something that we do need to do. Yes, John, some of the radios in the county right now, or not in our county, but by the state police, I think, are much older than 12 or 15 years old, and they still operate on the 800 system. And one question from Mike is that, I pointed out from the start, that in our capital improvement fund, we have, my opinion, $1.1 million dedicated right now, this year and next year, to radio improvements, that I think could potentially be used if those other two issues with Lenaway and the other tower happen to fall through. That has not been factored into this anywhere, has it?
Well, I think, to be clear, I don't think we have that kind of cash. I think we have it budgeted based on revenues in '17. Jim, you want to explain more, you know, more of this? My understanding is we don't have that kind of cash reserve. We have a budget that shows a capital purchase expenditure in the, in '17, but that, that, that is money that would be used for debt service if we were to go forward with a bond. Or, Jim, am I not thinking that right? Could you use the mic, Jim?
I, I'm not arguing that point. But, but the fact is that we have $1.1 million budgeted for the radio system. And the money has to be there somewhere. What we use it for, we can change that, correct?
Well, I agree, I agree. We do have money budgeted and for capital expense, yes. And, and frankly, you know, that's what I'm looking at, is taking that capital money and applying it to debt service.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I just wanted to make that point clear. But there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, including the sheriff under sheriff, and, you know, we've got a small work group going that the administrator has appointed that has fire department representation and fire departments for all the commissioners in the county from each of your districts. So it is the right thing, there's been a lot of issues to work through, we're still working through those, and I've got to tell you that I, as one person that listens to the radio a lot, that hears the breakdown in communications now, I'm looking forward to the safety factor for both the officers and firefighters out there when the system is implemented, if it is. Thank you.
I just want to add to Dave's about the safety. There's no question in that, in my area of the county, I have the big bowl that has lack of communication, and with this, it was a lot better with their test, their testing and the mapping, and especially with building taller towers to get up out of that bowl for communication in my area. So without a doubt, it's, it's definitely going to be the way to go, the safest thing to do, and worth every penny in my eyes, especially for, you know, my area.
Anyone else, questions, concerns, otherwise?
So Mike, the plan is to bring it to the board at our regular meeting this month?
Yes. I'm going to bring it to, you know, committee as well. Other questions? Anybody? Seeing, hearing none? Our next item up is the grant writer position. I would say a few things on this. We all know that, that, you know, I mean, we've said it, we've dealt with it for, you know, five years I've been here, and frankly, you were dealing with it before I got here, and that is our declining revenue, tight budgets, those sort of things. Oftentimes, I hear from department heads that, you know, they struggle to maintain and to apply for grants. It's that simple. It's not that certain grants aren't available, but at the end of the day, we've cut, we've cut personnel, there's still the job to be done, and when you have a grant opportunity come along, well, that's additional, that's something on top of your, you know, 50-hour week you're already doing. Our thought here is, and it's, it's, it's a trial, trial period, we're looking to bring someone on specifically to help us seek out, write grants, help administer grants, because remember, once you get a grant, there's still, dare I say, lots of strings and paperwork that are attached to a grant, that you have to maintain. There's been times in my career where I've looked at a grant and said, geez, I'm not sure it's worth the paperwork, frankly. But, be that said, much, in fact, you know what, much, much, a lot of our programs, half through, half of them are operated with, you know, 50% of grants, frankly. And there's more grants available we would like to apply for and work with. In my conversations with department heads and elected officials, I've made it clear that this position is not someone who, who can assume all grant responsibilities, and there's just not, it's not one, there's, you'd need multiple people to do something like that. And frankly, this person, he or she will not have the expertise in the courts or the parks or whatever grant they're applying for, so they have to work with the department head and elected official, help them refine the grant offering, putting it together, the proposal, and of course, upon success, help them set up the timeline and a reporting schedule and maintain the reporting adequately so we don't find ourselves in hot water with any grant administration details. But as you see before you here, this does come with a price. We're thinking that, well, it factors out with our scale to a grade 12, which would be roughly 50,000 to 58,000, almost 59,000, that's the range, depends on the person's experience. And then, of course, with benefits and so forth, we're talking at 71.5. And what I'm looking for here is consideration, I'd like to move forward and, we've got the job description and everything, you have that, we would like to move forward and advertise and move forward with this for 71, well, ultimate cost could be 71.5 a year. If in two years, this will come back in front of the board, and if, if it's not paying its bills at that time to your satisfaction, the position will go away. And, you know, initially, I thought, well, you know, we, we could do a year, but truth be told, I really don't think that's the case. Once I got, looking at it a little closer, one, when you bring someone on, there's that coming up to speed, getting involved with everybody, learning your way around, making application for grants, which takes time, and then, of course, sometimes they don't award but once a year, so it takes a, a year just to see opportunities and apply for opportunities. I'm thinking by the end of the second year, we should have a real good sense of whether it's going to make it or not, frankly. And obviously, we'd be very frank and forthright with whomever would be applying for this job, that, you know, this is a two-year commitment to you, you need to make this work or there's no guarantees. And I think that would be obviously the fair and honest thing to do. Questions, concerns, otherwise? Yes, Dave?
I'll be supportive of it based on your recommendation, especially for two years, and I would humbly suggest that the first thing we have that person look at is grants for the radio system. And I think back about 11 years or 12 years to when the sheriff department sought out and found, I think, two grants, one that built what was called the MDC system at the time, and another for radios, that provided radios throughout the county. I have to believe that that would be a worthwhile project for them to try and seek out grants to try and pay for part of our radio system.
To be clear, while I would also encourage them to, you know, work with 911 to seek grants for funding this or that equipment purchase, capital, whatever the case may be. To be clear, my experience is that when you, if you receive a grant, you can't necessarily supplant something that you're already doing, per se, it's, it's new dollars, so we might be hard-pressed to use it for a purchase that we've already made, so not, you know, I mean, it'd be great if we could, but I'm just saying, I just want to be frank about that.
Well, to be clear, we're not going to be buying radios yet, the project is going to be 18 to 24 months before we're able to pick up a radio and use it, correct, Rich?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So I, I'm just saying, look at it, I'm not saying we have to do it, but I think we'd be derelict in not looking at it.
No, I very much agree, we would, we would definitely be looking at it. Thank you. Anyone? Yes?
I actually asked Mike about this, I don't know, months, maybe a year ago, I have no idea, just with the decline in revenues and then cutting, the, cutting to different departments and stuff like that, and especially with us trying to move forward with projects such as the Cascades, obviously, the Fairgrounds at this point. And I just know that even in Region 2, you know, there's administration of grants there, and as a county, we just needed assistance with this, and somebody who has, you know, the skills to write these, and not necessarily take time away from our department heads for them to write on themselves, but to help them and be more efficient and productive. And, you know, I'm hoping that without question that they'll definitely pay for themselves many times over, so I'm excited to actually finally have this in front of our county moving forward and trying to capture some dollars that are out there that we haven't been taken advantage of.
Well, ideally, you know, and I'll ask, it can wait, it's not like it's, you know, critical, but ideally, in my mind, I'd like to have a motion if you guys are so inclined, because I want to go ahead and advertise it before Christmas, but, but it'll have to, it can wait until January 20th, but that is our, our 5 o'clock, 5:30 meeting.
Well, we, we do have a, coming up a personnel and finance, and we do have a December meeting cycle, so we can take care of it through the committee process and follow the normal routine. Also, and I, I think that might be a comfort level there, that way we can digest this a little bit, and I know that, that that may be, I guess I'm, I'm in favor of staying with the process, because in the past, we've been able to ask questions and things like that of the administrator on programs like this, and get some candid answers, and I think that's what we should do, and myself, and let the administrator bring it through the committee cycle. We start Monday, so that would be a good time.
Yeah, I'm good, if everybody else is good. All right, terrific. Yeah, I'm just pulling up the agenda. I have nothing additional. I believe... Dave, I wasn't here, you guys, you guys took care of all the other business? Okay, good.
We're at other items. I have an other item that I'd like everyone to think about. We don't make this decision until January, but are you comfortable with when our meetings are? Mondays, and then Tuesday morning at, at 8 o'clock for study session. The system was an experiment, we said we'd review it and look at it again during our organizational meeting, just keep that in mind, that if we were to move it to a non-Mondays or Tuesdays, we'd be able to get Hinckley Donuts.
Well, I think we, I think we should not then.
Just a side note, but no, seriously, our meeting schedule, just so we, we, in the past, we were Friday mornings, and we moved it to Tuesday, and it seems to have worked very, very well, let everyone just share with administration what they think, and we go forward. It's been a great year with study session, I think we've been able to handle a lot as we've kind of turned this into a hybrid meeting instead of just information only, and I think the board and the community have been well-served by taking the action we've taken and using, utilizing this meeting to happen every two weeks. That's all I have to say. Mike?
Just one other quick point of business. So we took action, there was a motion made and a vote on closed session. And the clerk concurs? Thank you.
Like I said, we got by fine without your mic.
Want comments, Steve, or?
If you'd like to.
This next year, we had a couple of times that we had to change it, so I'd like to look at the calendar a little bit closer, and then deal with that, like, maybe in committee or even at our Tuesday, or, obviously, we make that at our...
Organizational meeting.
...organizational meeting, but I'll- I'll make sure I look at that too, because I know there were a couple of times that with NACO, now that I'm on the Steering Committee for Justice, there were a couple of conflicts, so I would like to avoid those for our normal meetings and the NACO meetings.
That's why I brought it up now, so people could look at their schedules next year and see where we're at, and if we need- if we need to move things around, we can comfortably. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Alwell.
Are we down to commissioner comments yet, Mr. Chair, or?
Well, we're at other- we're at other items is where we're at.
I can wait till commissioner comments if you'd like.
Okay. This is the second round of public comment. If you'd like to address the Board of Commissioners, this is your opportunity to do it. You have three minutes. Any public comment? Any public comment? Public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Alwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I- I feel compelled to talk about the lame duck session in the legislature and the hot topic of the week, which has been the retiree issue. I got very strong feelings about that. Uh, I have listened to the public a lot, and I wear a number of different hats in that regard. I'm a retiree, I'm a county commissioner, and we make decisions that are impactful in that area, and I'm a police chief, uh, with a vested interest with a different type, uh, of setup, and I am totally dissatisfied with the fact that this issue was pushed so hard during lame duck session. It should not have been here, and I am fully supportive of allowing local governments to make these decisions themselves, like we make here. Uh, I think there was one, uh, plan being cast for the entire state, and we know what our issues are here with both healthcare and retirement. We've taken care of those by closing the pension system a number of years ago, and with healthcare now, uh, we do with health savings account for new employees. I think it's unfair to change things for retirees. I'm not ashamed to say that publicly, and I think we need to work on an ongoing basis forward on what we do with that, and I hope in the next session, our legislators, one of which is here, keep those things in mind, that we do, in my opinion, have an obligation to fulfill those promises that we made as we can, and that local level is the best level to deal with those. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak, uh, just got an email from Goneware News, and it says that the retiree healthcare bills are dead for the session. I just wanted to share that, in case, uh, you didn't know that.
Commissioner comments? Any further commissioner comments? Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, since, actually, Commissioner Alwell, uh, spoke very eloquently about, uh, what I feel strongly about as well, and, uh, uh, I had the good fortune, if you want to look at it that way, of being, uh, a part of a, uh, a public meeting Saturday where, uh, to my amazement, uh, the number of retired police officers, firefighters, uh, uh, people who have served our public, uh, for, um, quite frankly, uh, generations, uh, showed up. Uh, it was amazing to me. I was totally surprised at the number of people that were there, and, uh, I was also, uh, uh, very surprised that the feedback we got from, uh, one of our representatives, uh, um, quite frankly, and, uh, and I will say this, uh, uh, there- there apparently was not a lot of forethought in- in the lives of people who, uh, serve our community. Apparently, there was not a fore- a lot of forethought, and- and what, uh, actually is the undertaking of being a police officer, firefighter, uh, first responder, uh, uh, the type of work, uh, that they do, uh, is, um, it is different than other type of work. Uh, if anybody wants to research the- the various, uh, types of responsibilities, uh, what police officers, for exam- excuse me, what police officers, for example, encounter on a daily basis, how it affects their families, et cetera, um, you know, all professions have their place, and all of them are needed, but if you would take a close look at this, you- you would realize that, uh, um, uh, those that are at the state level, um, and our- and our own representative, uh, here for, uh, part of Jackson, uh, um, uh, quite frankly, uh, uh, I was- I was quite, uh, dismayed at- at the lack of knowledge of- of how this was going to affect the lives of so many, uh, wonderful people who, uh, who again, uh, have gone through tremendous amounts of- of, uh, struggles and everything else, just to get to the point of actually having a retirement. Um, and they gave up a lot along the way to get there, and, uh, uh, I just felt like there was a whole lot better way to- to do this than, uh, than to try to sabotage, uh, uh, the- these people, uh, um, quite frankly, at the last minute, and, uh, I'm- I'm very glad to hear that at this point anyway, it's- it's been pulled, so, thank you.
Any further commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you. Just wanted to, uh, have it on- on record. Uh, I missed the- the vote from the closed session, and I was going to vote no on that, and then, uh, yes for the- the resolution for Earl Palesky.
Commissioner comments? Any others? We are adjourned.